Good morning, everybody. Good evening, actually. Excuse me, apologize. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, November 5th, 7:00 PM in the second floor meeting room of the Groton Town Hall. Tonight, we'll have announcements after I review this agenda for the public, followed by a public comment period, followed by Town Manager's report where we're going to do an update from Town Manager on Standard and Poor's bond rating review, fiscal year 2019, quarter financial review, and the annual goals update of the Select Board and Town Manager. At 7:15, we'll go a commercial, we'll have a commercial development opportunity presentation by Kevin Lindemer, and we're actually going to take this up first. We're going to approve the issuance of general obligation bonds for the senior center, ladder truck, and Lost Lake Fire Protection. We have a list of ongoing issues, potentially some selectman liaison reports, followed by the discussion on the approval of minutes, regularly scheduled meeting of October 16th, 2018. As an announcement, I'll start first, that we were informed that this meeting is not able to go live over Verizon tonight due to some issue with Verizon. It is going live over Charter, but it will be rebroadcast on Verizon. So, just so everybody's not concerned, it's just a challenge at the company themselves. With that, does anybody else on the board have any announcements? Becky?
I have two, actually. The first is that I attended yesterday the open house at the new Sherdi-Sai Temple. It was, the open house was very well attended, and I have to say, it is a gorgeous building, very large. The people, all of the representatives of the temple who were showing people around were extremely friendly. Everyone that I heard and talked to was very impressed. It's beautiful. I don't have a large understanding of the religion myself. I gained maybe a little bit more by being there. They particularly mentioned that they will be offering, starting this week, free yoga classes Wednesday evenings at 7:00 PM with Barbara Rich, who's a Groton resident that wanted to work with them, and Saturday mornings at 9:00 AM, and that also they have members of their community who are fully licensed practicing doctors and dentists who wish to volunteer their time and offer free services to people who would, could use that. So, they're very interested in being involved in our community. They're happy to be here, and they want to be active, good citizens, participate in our life. And then, the other announcement is, we have an election tomorrow. I hope there's no one to whom this is a surprise piece of news, but if so, I'm really glad I told you. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The important thing to remember is if you live in Precinct 1, which is generally west Groton and coming east a little bit, you cannot go to the senior center to vote because the senior center is in, under construction. So, you are voting at the town hall. There's plenty of parking at the rear of the town hall, including, I think, the restaurant parking lot is available to use, and there's handicapped access at the back of the town hall. And Precincts 2 and 3, as usual, are at the country club. There is also handicapped access there. We hope there will be better signage. You have to drive past the building to get to the handicapped access. And you will be given two ballots, so it may be a slightly longer and a little bit more complex check-in process than usual. One is the state ballot, one is the town ballot with the question about marijuana. I think that's it.
Anybody else have any announcements? Seen none, we'll move forward with Mr. Hartnett.
Thank you, everyone.
Go ahead, Tom. I apologize. I should've go to the public comment first. I'm reminded by the Town Manager. It's my fault. Are there any public comments? Okay, now, thank, I'm, sorry.
As we've been planning, we're going out to do a permanent bond issue later this month, and as a result of that, I need to get a vote of the Select Board to authorize me to go out and seek bids. We'll do that a week from tomorrow on November 13th, and at that time, you know, several municipal-related bond market entities will probably, you know, bid on these bonds, will accept the lowest bid. The following, November 19th, I'll have to come back to the board with a, with a large group of paperwork that I'll need, you know, signatures from majority or unanimous section of the board. This bond issue is going to be $7,760,000, and it's going to bond the entire senior center, part of which has already been bond, been, been put on a short-term note for $3 million. We're going to bond the remainder of the fire truck and also the remainder of Lost Lake Fire Protection that were also authorized and have been on short-term notes since 2016. So, that's what I'm here tonight to do, and I'd appreciate your, your...
In your packet was a copy of the vote that we need you to take tonight. It was on the other business. It starts on page... No, you didn't put it in? Oh, I thought it was. That was probably that. I'm sorry. I thought I had sent it out to you.
I didn't see it.
No, my fault. I thought I had put it in it. I apologize. I wanted you guys to be clear. This is very similar to the vote that you've taken in the past. As a matter of fact, you took it last, last spring. All right, I messed up. I apologize, Barry. I thought I had put it in the packet.
So, what? Do we need to move the entire thing?
I would ask, I don't want you to read it, but it basically authorizes the treasurer to go out and accept bonds on behalf of the town for this purpose.
All right. I'll, I'll read it into the, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah. Question would be, what is the breakdown of the balance on Lost Lake, the balance on the fire truck, and the amount of money for the senior center, please?
The senior center is going to be bonded at a full $5,345,000. The ladder truck, $895,000, and Lost Lake Fire Protection, $1,520,000. The Lost Lake Fire Protection was, the, the bond authori, the borrowing authorization three years ago was originally $1,837,000, but we've paid it down. The fire truck was $995,000, and that's been paid down to $895,000, which is what we're going to use for the takeout on the bond. The senior center has not, has, has, has been borrowed up to this point for $3 million for, you know, based on a construction spending schedule, and at this time, we're going to, we're going to add in the rest of the borrowing authorization and bring it up to $5,345,000 and borrow it.
All right. So, I understand the ladder truck, and I understand the fire protection balances, but if you've borrowed $3 million already...
Short-term, Josh. It was not a permanent borrow. We're going to permanently finance the 5.3.
So, do you pay off, do you pay off the short-term bond with the proceeds from the permanent bonds?
Exactly.
That's what I was looking for.
Exactly, Josh.
Thank you.
Yep.
How secure is that 5.3, or how, what happens if that amount changes or...
Can't change. Town meeting, Town meeting authorized that bonding based on the bids received for the project. It won't be greater than that. It can't be. We'd have to go back to Town meeting for additional appropriation. If it's less than that, then we would have to figure out to either re-authorize it, re-appropriate it for a different purpose, or close it out somehow. But, we need to permanently finance it now because of rates our, our bond council recommended, or our bond advisors recommended. Now's the time to bond this number based on market conditions.
Yep.
But, Town meeting authorized a full 5.3. It doesn't matter when you permanently finance it. That's all we have to spend on the project. That's what Town meeting authorized. Hope that makes sense.
Do we have the total amount of this motion someplace in print?
The total of what you have in front of you is going to be $7,760,000.
Allison, I felt like you weren't satisfied with the answer enough, that, you know, like what happens if we don't, if we only spend five, the 5.3?
Right. Well, we figure it out somehow.
That, I mean, that's happened before, and certainly, I think the fire station was similar. We didn't spend all of the money that we bonded, and, and what was the result of that?
Well, portion of that was, a portion of the money for that project was from proceeds from the bond, the payment bond for the contract that went out, and they had paid the town. We just closed that out to free, closed it out to free cash this year, actually, don't we?
We didn't end up having to spend all of it because of the...
So, I guess there's, we have to handle it when it happens and be fiscally, you know, aware, and I know we'll, we'll take a look at it, and we can only hope that it comes in, you know, that much under that we have to have that issue.
Right.
All right. So, I'll read the, what the clerk is going to sign to the record, unless you'd prefer to read it, John. I don't mind. I'll take care of it.
One more question, Barry?
Yeah, go for it, John.
So, I remember the fire station situation where we had extra money that was left over from the bond when that was done, and that got used certainly for other things at the fire station, and, and I'm aware of that. But, in the case of the senior center, let's just say, for example, it comes in $250,000 less than what's anticipated. We've already borrowed all the money for the full value of the 5.345 million. Is there a way that as part of the motion, rather than sitting on that money and flowing through the free cash, could we designate those funds to pay off the portion of the principal against the bond early?
Town meeting can vote to expend those funds how Town meeting chooses for another capital project. For example, say, the library roof, or the highway garage, or, I don't know, something, Flo-Ro, something comes up, and then we need to, we can take whatever's left over. Town meeting can redirect those funds to another capital project.
Or they could use them to pay off a capital bond.
There's a limit on that.
Yeah, the problem is, it's, it's a bond. It's not, it's, it's, it's the type of mechanism, right?
Yeah. The Municipal Authorization Act allows you a little more flexibility than there used to be in paying up surplus bond proceeds, and I have to go back and double-check, but I think you get something like $100,000 that you can automatically use to just, you know, pay off that particular debt. But, otherwise, yes, you really do have to pay off something, put it towards another capital project that you could bond for a similar term.
I hope we have that problem.
It, it, it very rarely comes up, but, yeah. There's generally, there's always a way to deal with it.
Yeah. It's more a limitation of the financing mechanism than our desire to pay off principal early.
It, it never does go to free cash, though, because there would be, there would be issues with that.
Yeah.
The only reason the fire station, I mentioned the fire station where it closed out to free cash is because it was proceeds from an insurance payment to the town, which is not part of the bonding.
Right. Okay. I'll read what's going to be signed off by the clerk. "I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Groton, Massachusetts, the town, certify that a meeting, that at a meeting of the board held November 5th, 2018, of which all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that the treasurer is authorized to market and advertise for sale the town's general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2018 bonds to be dated November 27th, November 27th, 2018, the bonds, as more fully described in the notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated November 1st, 2018, known as the preliminary official statement. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of the preliminary official statement in such form as approved by the treasurer and be and hereby is ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the treasurer is authorized to award the bonds upon the terms set forth in the preliminary official statement, subject to the approval of the award by the board. Further voted that the bonds may be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as may be set forth in the preliminary, preliminary official statement. Further voted that the treasurer is authorized to repair and distribute a final official statement in such form as may be approved by the treasurer in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds. Further voted that the treasurer and the Select Board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post issuance, federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds. Further voted that each member of the Select Board, the town clerk, and the treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at the meeting, at a meeting open to the public, and that no vote was taken by secret ballot, and that a notice stating the time, the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which included, which agenda included the adoption of above notes, was filed with the town clerk, and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General set forth in 940 CMR 29.03, Section 2B, at least 24 hours, not including Saturdays...
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight hours, excuse me. Going too fast. Not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays. Prior to the, prior to the time of the meeting and remain so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with the general laws, 30A, Section 18-25 as amended, dated November 5th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I can certify that the agenda was posted properly. It was listed on the other business on the agenda.
So, been certified. Thank you, Town Manager. Okay, board, we need to do this duly voted. That has been requested.
I move. What color red is the motion?
All of the votes at once, right?
All the votes at once been read into the record, and so moved.
I'll second.
Seconded. For general purposes of discussion, the amount of the bonds are $7,760,000. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Thank you. Allison?
So, I'm still stuck back in my original quandary. There must be a mechanism, and it may not make sense, but there must be a mechanism whereby we don't bond these monies until we know the actual amount, right? I mean, I understand that it may be financially in our best interest to do this now with an estimated number.
The number isn't estimated. Town meeting voted to authorize $5,347,000 for the fire, for the senior center. That is not an estimate. That is the official vote of the Groton Town Meeting in May, in April of 2018.
So, and these calculations?
Based on bids. I mean, based on received bids.
Based on the bids.
Right.
And these, some of these calculations, you're taking, you're taking a choice to bond something today because you believe it would be fiscally more viable, even if we're bonding 5.3 million than if you were to bond 5.2 a year later based on how the bond rates are going to go. So, some of it has to do with market timing and that risk variation analysis. And I can only assume, and knowing our treasurer and our finance partner the way it is, that those calculations have been taken into effect, given nobody can predict the future, but what seems to be happening in the bond market.
Based on the market conditions, we sat down with our bond advisors two, three, four times over the last three months, as we were planning for this, as we were planning for a potential highway garage project, as we were planning for a potential library roof, and their advice to us was to bond this sooner rather than later, given the changing market conditions, if we wanted to, if we wanted to get the best interest rates available. That's why we're here for you tonight. I have faith in our financial advisors and their advice, and that's why I'm making this recommendation to you tonight.
And when we sell these bonds, the prediction, if you will, is that we're going to receive a substantial bond premium, and it's going to cover all our bond issuance costs.
Right.
And maybe then some, and, you know, based on reaffirming the AAA, which you'll get into in a while. So, it seems like it's exactly the right time, especially with the prediction that we're going to receive a substantial bond premium.
If, if we...
Cover all these, all these issuance costs, which are going to be in the $70,000 to $80,000 range.
If we waited a year, and we knew that the town, that senior center came in $100,000 less, there's actually a chance that it could cost us more in bonding, much more than that $100,000 value on bonding. And I think that's the risk fiscal thing we're, we're dealing with here.
I understand that. I guess I would, I, I think it's important that, that we and the public have some understanding of that.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm comfortable approving this. I agree that it's probably, you know, I'm confident that it's the right path forward. I'm not particularly comfortable with the answer that if we end up ultimately having borrowed more money than we need, then we just spend it on another capital project.
We asked Town meeting their, their decision.
Understood, but...
Right. And there is some flexibility in the MMA, and, and we can look at that, but there is some challenges as well, given it's a bond, and there's some guarantees that are required. But, I appreciate the fiscal consistency, and, you know, the government is challenging sometimes, right?
And next Wednesday, I'll inform Mark of the bid results, and then everything will get put together for the following Monday night back here, and at that time, you'll know what our bond premium is and what our rate came in at.
Yeah. Is there any other questions, concerns, feedback, ideas from the members of the board, and then I'll go to the public.
What's the anticipated interest rate? What do you, what's the ballpark on that?
We're hoping under four.
Yeah, we're hoping under four, and the, in the more recent, in the last 30 days, the more recent AAA's in our size range have been in the, in the mid threes.
That's a good rate. That's pretty mine.
And we've been told that it's just continuing to trend up, though.
Yeah.
In, in a perfect world, we would wait until the project was done, closed out, final bills paid, but now you're talking probably September or October of 2019. Year, year down the road, just in our bond advisor said that doesn't, well, I understand that it just doesn't make sense to wait a year, strike when the market conditions are, are strong, especially for $7 million.
John, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I'd like to, I, I'm not sure where this fits, but I'd like to ask that, in this particular bond, if we get near the end and we haven't spent all that we borrowed, that that amount be made visible to the Select Board before there's any discussions about what to do with it.
Yeah. Good idea.
That, that goes without saying, Josh.
Absolutely.
We'll, we'll make, that'll happen. Thanks for saying it. Yes. Okay. Any thing from the public on this before we consider our vote? I see no one moving towards the mic, so all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I heard that unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, while we're on the issue of bonding and borrowing money and everything, I'd like to handle item number one, item number two under the Town Manager's report before we move on to anything else that was fresh in our mind. Part of this process that we talked about tonight requires a review by Wall Street of the town's finances, including the town's management, policies, budgeting, and anticipated economic development. I'm pleased to report that Standard and Poor has confirmed the town's AAA bond rating, which I believe is good news for the taxpayers and residents, as it allows us to get the best interest rates on our bonds. So, I've given you a copy of the, the ratings direct from Standard and Poor outlining the town's financial position as reviewed by Standard and Poor, and as, as you can see, they've affirmed our AAA bond rating. They say we're stable moving forward. I highlighted a couple of things in here that I think is important for the public to understand as far as the town's financial management. Groton's debt is eligible to be rated above the sovereign because we believe the town can maintain better credit, better credit characteristics in the U.S. in a, in a stress scenario, which is good news. The long-term rating reflects Groton's comprehensive budget development process and emphasis on long-term capital and financial planning, which continues to yield a positive budgetary performance and maintenance of strong budgetary flexibility. The rating says, says that Groton has very strong management with strong financial policies and practices under our financial management assessment methodology, and I thank the Finance Committee and the Select Board for their work in, in getting those policies put in place. Strong budgetary performance with slight operating surpluses in the general fund at the total government fund level in fiscal '17. Strong budgetary flexibility with a favorable fund balance in fiscal '17, which was 14.3% of our operating expenditures. We view the town's management as very strong with strong financial policies and practices in preparation to obtaining budget management works alongside with department managers to review annual operation requests and prioritize operating expenditures. And given the conversation that we had last week, I thought this was, was an important statement in here that I want to call to your attention. The Groton also maintains a strong focus on long-term capital planning evidenced by its five-year capital improvement plan that identifies projects and costs across all departments, and that we update it annually, and we fund it through various processes, which I thought was an important note. Our budgetary performance, they believe, is strong, and they expect Groton to maintain strong performance over the next several years, largely due to its comprehensive budgeting development and monitoring framework coupled with its manageable expenditure and fixed cost profile. So, I'm very excited with the way that this came out. It's, it's, it's a testament to the hard work of the finance department, the finance team. I thank Mike and Patricia and Jonathan and Lisa and Dawn for all their work on this, and I, and I appreciate the support that the Finance Committee and the Select Board has given us in terms of our policy proposals and putting those into place. So, it's good news for the taxpayers that we maintained our AAA bond rating. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Town Manager. If, I know we're a little over time. Without objection, I'd like to go to the 7:15 agenda item, unless anybody has any discussion points on this item before we move on. Okay. Let's, Kevin?
That, is that posted online? This, the Standard and Poor's review?
I don't know. I don't, should we post it online? We can?
It might be something, a good idea from, for people that want to read that, to dissect and understand what's going on, and gets a little bit of faith back in fiscal management and the government.
Good to go?
Yeah, please, thank you.
Great. Thanks for having us here. So, over the last few years, I brought this up a number of times when I was a selectman, and Kevin and I just sort of decided to go ahead and do it ourselves and bring this forward to you. There was an observation many, many times about how we might increase revenue to the town, and what is economic development, and it sort of drove a number of questions that really drove this project. Could you go forward one slide, Mark? Thanks. So, really, we, we started out with this question. We've heard this quite often. Why don't we just grow our commercial base? When we've had requests for school overrides, $2 million, folks would sometimes say, well, if we just had more commercial revenue, we wouldn't have this problem. When we, when there was a suggestion to build and fund entirely a sewer at Four Corners, there was a question of, well, a suggestion that it would pay for itself with the increased revenue or economic development that it would bring in, and an analysis showed that that was not necessarily the case. So, it became clear that, that we really need to get a better understanding of what commercial development in town really meant. And so, we set out to create a fact base to support that discussion. And really, everything that you see here today really starts with a fact base. We're trying to stay away from opinions and just present some facts that can then fuel a discussion that can lead to some opinions. But, we don't intend to present those opinions today, just the facts. We wanted to identify opportunities that there might be to optimize commercial tax revenue. We wanted to sort of demonstrate the difference between commercial revenue and economic development. Oftentimes, that term, economic development, is used rather loosely. In fact, economic development is a very big topic, loosely described as the general economic health of a region. Commercial revenue is a very small piece of economic development, and it's important to understand those two distinctions as you start talking about opportunities. In order to do that, we wanted to find ways to measure those opportunities, and so, we set about developing various forms of measurement that you'll see listed in many of the slides that Kevin will talk about here today. And after we took a look at all of that, we felt like we had begun to assemble ways to explore opportunities to expand commercial zoning, ways to explore opportunities to optimize commercial districts. And we hoped to come out with an understanding of what's possible and what's not. I want to make it really clear, we are not trying to discourage economic development here. We're not trying to encourage it. This last bullet point was important because we have presented this a few times before, and some folks have said, well, why bother after seeing what we said, or, I don't care. I'm, you're not going to stop me. I'm going to keep trying no matter what. And that, that told us that we perhaps had provided the wrong message. Again, as I mentioned, we're trying to provide just some facts for use by ourselves, but others, mostly the town, actually, leaders and its citizenry, to under, to better understand where we are and what our opportunities are. Could you go to the next slide? Thanks. Thanks. So to do that, we went through a pretty methodical approach. We first documented all the commercial industrial property in the town. We focused on land value and building value as a way of understanding this. Because it's important to break those two down because they have a lot to do with what future opportunities are. We developed, as I mentioned, measures to look at this, and you'll see some of those measures specifically called out in many of the slides here. We also developed what we call business areas, and this, you know, we have various districts, but we wanted to identify business areas that are understandable to people in our town. The Four Corners area, the CBS area, things that people can relate to as they try to understand some of the numbers that are in here. We looked at places that are currently zoned, commercial or industrial, but not yet developed, because these are some of the opportunities that we've got for expansion. We wanted to identify those and make them clear to show which ones are possibly developed and which ones aren't. After we'd done all that, we set out a couple of questions, and this presentation, much of what Kevin will go through is largely organized around those questions. In order to be sure that we had accurate data, we went and validated our data, which we pulled ourselves from available resources, went and validated with the assessors. The assessors, first of all, agreed that our data was good, but, um, but they sent us back access to their own data, and we used that and checked our data and found that it was all, again, very close. So that leads us to conclude that we've got a good data set here. Then we went out and reviewed this with the business community, and we went and talked to the economic development committee, and we went and talked to the planning board. And our goal was to end up coming back to you and eventually present this somehow to the town so that our town can have a collective understanding of what might be possible and what might not be possible, but based on fact, not just on conjecture. And so the next slide is... So we brought these resources to bear, while, while originally I came up with these thoughts, I involved Kevin, who has extraordinary background as an economist, to help me to understand how to look at them and to gather and, and work with that data. Jonathan Greeno was really valuable to us in terms of providing information, as was the Board of Assessors. The Vision Database, the Town GIS map, all these things were really helpful. But at the end, really, um, I'd say it was Kevin's work to move these numbers around. It helped us to come out with information that I think you'll find, or hope you'll find valuable tonight. You can use that mic, Kevin, if you want, I just wanted to stand there.
Thanks, Jack. Very, I really appreciate you allotting us the time tonight. So if you go, uh, we, uh, we started as, uh, just as a visual, uh, just using the assessors' map. And what we've learned, uh, this is a good visual for it, but, um, not, it's, it doesn't match up completely with the database, so, uh, but just to give you an idea, uh, a visual where, uh, commercial property and industrial property is, uh, within the town. And you can see, for all practical purposes, it's, it's along one nineteen from, uh, Neb's, or from the river all the way down to, uh, the, the town line in, uh, in Littleton. So if you, uh, go to the next slide, what we did was we defined four business areas. Uh, Village Center, and this was just based on properties that were, uh, on the assessors' map, zoned as the Village Center, uh, area. Now, some of these are in West Groton, but not very many. We then defined, uh, CBS, and this is only the tax generating properties at CBS. Mill Run, again, only the tax generating properties at Mill Run, and I think there are a couple out there that aren't. And then Four Corners, the same thing. So we're, we're going to be making comparisons, we'll use these four, uh, business or commercial areas rather than, uh, as defined by zoning. If you go to the next slide, a couple of things here to keep in mind as a, as perspective. Uh, about thirty-seven percent of the town area is actually tax, uh, generating. Uh, the other, uh, or sorry, forty-five percent of the land is tax generating. Uh, the other fifty-five percent is exempt, we're in chapter land. So, uh, to give you an idea what the maximum universe of, uh, of, of land that we could use for future development, it's, uh, forty-five percent of the properties in town. Uh, so, and this encompasses, uh, all of the zoning, residential, commercial, industrial, and then there are a whole bunch of other little, uh, residential business and residential commercial, that sort of thing. If you go to the next slide, I realize, yeah, go ahead.
Kevin, could you, uh, tell me what you mean by chapter land?
Yeah, chapter sixty-one, sixty-one A, uh, sixty-one B, I think there's a sixty-one C. Uh, is it A, B, and C? I, I'm familiar with A, uh, but I think there's C, B, and C as well, but I don't know exactly what those are. A is ag.
Agriculture, right.
And I think that's the majority. Yeah, so you can see on, uh, this next slide, Becky, oh, and please, as we go through this, if you have any questions or comments, just, uh, don't save it until the end. There's a purple slice here of sixty-one, chapter sixty-one land. This is the non-sixty-one A chapter land. The ag land sixty-one A is about a thousand acres i- in town. I realized that there's an error in every program, and I found it in the text, uh, in that first bullet point. It's actually forty-seven percent of the land in town is, uh, exempt, and forty-three percent is residential. So, uh, before you post this up on the town website or anything, Mark, I'll send you a revised version of this. When you look at what we actually have, currently have to work with in town, only one percent of our land is zoned, uh, as commercial, and point six percent of the land is zoned as industrial. Now, rezoning is a possibility, but it might not be, uh, an option for greater commercial development. Uh, we, we've identified about eighteen hundred acres of undeveloped land that's zoned residential, but there's almost, and almost none of this land is located, uh, in an attractive commercial area, which I think most of, most people would define as, you know, somewhere within a half a block of, of one nineteen. Uh, and the quality of undeveloped residential land is a significant limit, uh, to future development. We know that, uh, of that eighteen hundred acres that's zoned, uh, residential, you're not going to get six hundred two-acre lots on it, uh, because there's a lot of wetlands, there's a lot of, uh, uh, buffer zones and restrictions in that area. So, wh- what we are working with today is, uh, just a little bit over one percent of the land that's, uh, uh, zoned commercial. And, uh, you can see, uh, we've, uh, our, in our, uh, aggregates here, uh, Four Corners is, um, one of those tiny little slices up there, I think it's about eleven acres. Uh, CBS is, um, another one of those slices, I think that's the one that's thirteen. Uh, and the Village Center is actually one of the larger ones, uh, that one I, I think is, uh, right around a hundred and seventeen acres. Uh, industrial, uh, or sorry, the industrial's a hundred and seventeen acres. So there's, uh, uh, the amount of land that we have to move, we, could be developed is very, very tiny unless there's, uh, amount, uh, rezoning involved. And we'll go through some of this, uh, uh, in a little bit better, uh, detail as we go along here. So if you go to the next slide, um, what we're showing here is that, uh, on a building space basis. So we have two metrics. For the land area, we're using acreage, and for the building area, we're going to be using thousands of square feet. So, in Groton, ninety percent of the building area is currently classified as residential. So if you want to give a, it's ten thousand, or ten million, five hundred thousand square feet of residential, uh, assessed residential square footage here in town. And when you look at, from a building area perspective, uh, you have, uh, seven hundred seventy-four thousand square feet is exempt. That's more for schools. Uh, our CBS area, it barely registers in this chart, either in this Mill, or Mill Run Plaza or Village Center. All of these are very, very small slivers of land, and I'll point out that, uh, what we have, uh, that only three percent of the, uh, of the land is actually, or of our building sites are actually zoned, uh, commercial. Uh, industrial's about one percent. If you go on to the next one, um, we also looked then at, well, what, how do the, how are these things assessed? What can we expect if we, uh, if we develop something as a, as a business versus residential? And when we looked at our, our business area centers that we, we've identified here, on a, on a, an assessed value per square foot of building, you would, because we have one rate, one mill rate, you would think that they should be pretty close. So residential, uh, is, uh, uh, any of the other business centers that we've developed, other than Four Corners, uh, is right around or a little bit less than the, uh, the value per square foot of all of the residential property in town. So if we developed it as a, if we developed buildings as un- uh, as commercial on some future land, you can expect that we might actually be better off from a tax revenue perspective, just developing residential. Uh, and of course, there's a lot of other things that will go into this, like density and things like that, but the, on a square-footed basis, uh, we, uh, our, uh, our, uh, tax revenue on a square foot of building acreage, or building space is, uh, better residential than most of the other business centers. Yeah, very.
Did that take into account personal property tax too?
No, uh, we didn't include personal property tax, uh, in any of this, and that's an area to, uh, to consider. Uh, the personal property is going to vary widely between the type of business that it is. Uh, so that's another thing to consider, and, and as an option, when we're looking forward, is that, well, if, uh, is there a way to favor businesses that have a high, uh, uh, personal property tax element to it rather than, uh, we're renting out, uh, office spaces to, um, very low property tax type businesses?
But I think we did look at the personal property tax number. Do you have more, Patricia?
It's, um, four, ten thousand, four to fourteen thousand.
So it's maybe, uh, thirty percent of the total, of the total commercial tax?
Yeah.
So it's a, really a fraction of that, it's not as if it could double it?
Hey, John?
For the people that are watching and those who will watch on the Firehouse Channel somebo- at some point, could you just spend thirty seconds and explain what personal property tax is?
Yeah.
Please.
Personal property tax is what you pay on an asset that is, um, uh, in addition to your building. So that personal property tax could be, uh, fixtures, uh, uh, vehicles, capital, uh, any kind, uh, for agriculture can be a tractor, uh, it's, uh, so it'd be any equipment or, or fixtures, like, uh, refrigerators and freezers and, and that sort of thing. And it's, uh, um, I'm not sure how it's actually valued, uh, but that wasn't part of our purview. Uh, I, there are people downstairs that are really good at, if you want any more definition than that.
Kevin?
Yeah.
On, back on that slide.
Yeah.
Do you have any theories about why Four Corners is so different?
Yeah, I think, uh, part of that is Shaw's. It's just a, an enormous, it's just an enormously big building, and it's, and I think it's got a high value. Uh, I went, this question has come up before, and I went through and looked at it, and I believe it is the Shaw's building that's driving that.
So it's more expensive to build, per square foot, to build a Shaw's than it is to build?
A medical appliance.
Graves, as an example.
Yeah.
Um, because it's a bigger, taller building, has probably more code issues, et cetera, and that's why on a per-square-foot basis, it costs more and is valued more.
Okay.
The, uh, so another thing to take away from this is, well, if we wanted to, uh, uh, another high value per square foot is build, build large structures and supermarkets or something like that. And you can quickly start going to the corner and saying, well, gosh, that's not going to work. Uh, you know, so that, that's one of the things to, to be thinking about. Uh, we, so if you look at the next slide, which is land on a dollar per acre, and you can see that the Village Center sticks out because land in the Village Center is actually worth more than the land someplace else in town. So it's assessed at a higher value, uh, per acre. So you can see that, uh, on a dollar per acre, uh, a lot, and a one-acre lot in Village Center would be close to a quarter of a million dollars. Uh, the average residential lot around town is actually about seventy-five thousand dollars, based on the assessed value. Uh, and you can see for Mill Run, CBS, Four Corners, Four Corners is actually quite low. It's still right in the area of, uh, what is assessed for an average residential lot. So the property values, as you move away from town center, drop down pretty quickly. And another reason is there's not that much land in the Village Center that you can actually do something on, so it's, it's a, it's a scarce commodity. Yeah.
Back to that last slide, is the residential within the Village Center, are those parcels on a per-acre basis also valued?
I didn't look at it, I didn't look at it in that granularity.
Okay.
But I, I'm, I'm going to bet that it is.
Right, okay.
Yeah, it, because it land is land in, in, in the zone, but that's a, that's a good question that we might want to look at further down.
Yeah, I think our numbers just looked at the land value for commercial property in the Village Center and calculated that on a per acre, and that's what we know. What we assume is that the residential in that same area is going to have a similar land value per acre, although commercial might be higher because it's owned commercial and the revenue opportunities that it creates for a buyer.
So on, on this slide, what we've looked at is, all right, so where is our tax revenue coming from? Ninety-seven percent comes from residential. Uh, so this is, uh, the, almost everything else gets lost in drowning error when you start looking at, uh, Four Corners or CBS. They, they generate money of, of good revenue stream per development, but it's still very, very small compared to our overall revenue and also our, our revenue needs. So, uh, in fact, we, we did a, one little exercise, was you just take the building value alone for commercial property, the tax revenue associated with buildings, and you double it. You would increase town revenue by another five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, the, it's, uh, to, to put it into scale, if you could somehow just wave a magic wand and double the tax revenue from commercial building space, the buildings only, it only gets you about another half a million dollars. So when we talk about, uh, growing commercial revenue and through some kind of development, uh, it, it's, uh, the magic of small numbers, doubling a small number is a small number. And, uh, so when we're thinking about this, that, uh, it's, it, it will be difficult, uh, under our current zoning and current approaches, uh, to be able to do that. On the next, what we did on the next slide, we just wanted to, another cut at it, just by looking at our various business areas. And you look at, we segregated this into land value and to, uh, uh, building value. Uh, so our newest building centers, uh, Four Corners, CBS, and Mill Run, uh, the, each one of these, uh, the est- estimated tax revenue that comes into town from these four developments are around seventy-five thousand dollars for CBS and Four Corners. We have not yet taken into account the added revenue coming from the, uh, there's the southeast corner of Four Corners. Uh, when we started putting this together, we didn't have that revenue yet, but we did have a couple of other ones that we'll show you in a minute. And Mill Run, the, the whole thing, is about twenty-five thousand dollars total. So you think about this, we did another Mill Run Plaza, you just copy it. It's seventy-five, it's about twenty-five thousand dollars in incremental tax revenue to the town, plus that we're already collecting tax on the land, so actually, the, uh, the incremental revenue would be something on the order of maybe ten or fifteen thousand dollars. Yeah.
You're saying that Mill Run Plaza only generates twenty-five thousand dollars?
That's right.
Taxes?
Yeah.
Sure about that?
Uh, pretty sure, uh, I'm happy to go, we, we'd be happy to go look at that.
Like you to double check that.
Okay, we'll double check the Mill Run one. Uh, okay, so, uh, the, uh, so, if we go to the next slide, we wanted to look and see, well, what's our estimated tax per property of developed land? So what is the average tax generated per property? Um, the average residential property generates about seventy-five hundred dollars in taxes in, in Groton, and this is the average of all of the existing, uh, properties. Four Corners generates close to seventeen thousand five hundred dollars per property. Uh, and again, this is skewed by Shaw's and, and those two other buildings that are over there. CBS, fourteen grand, and Mill Run is actually pretty small. Now, Josh, if there's an error in the Mill Run numbers, it might translate into this, but Mill Run has a lot of small properties. So on a per-property basis, uh, the, the Mill Run numbers are going to be low, just given the size of the, so many small properties. And Village Center, about what you would expect from a residential property. Uh, it generates about seventy-five hundred, seven thousand, seventy-five hundred dollars per property of developed land. This doesn't include undeveloped land.
Just to point out too, when you guys came and presented this to the EDC, I had a similar comment, that I, I personally kind of feel like per acre or something would be a better analysis, just in that, you know, the Village Center parcels tend to be smaller.
Yeah, if you flip up, um, uh, if you could go back up to, say, uh, slide, uh, eleven. That one. You can see on a per-acre basis, uh, Village Center is valued at around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, this is for the commercial properties in the developed, uh, in the, uh, in the Village Center. Uh, if we, one, uh, if we do... If we, one, if we do a couple of more things here, yeah, sorry, John.
This is a question for you and for Mark. When, when we do the impact of taxes on the average house, the average property in Groton, what is the number that we use for?
For the value, four twenty-five?
Okay, so that seems to be different than what you mentioned here.
Yeah.
Of about seventy-five hundred, I mean seventy-five thousand.
This is, and again, this is the weighted average of all the residential properties in Groton. So there, there could be a difference in calculation from, but we, I don't have, I do not, so for residential, that's just, this one is just the land, and if you go up one more slide, we have dollars per square, square foot is the assessed value. So I don't, we did not show the average value of a house in a lot. So if we're using the same database, they're going to be very, very close together. So if you set a, it's a twenty-five hundred square foot house, take it times seventy-five dollars and then add, if you go down one more, add say seventy-five thousand for a lot or a hundred thousand for a lot.
Five fifty thousand for a lot, right?
Yeah.
Two acres.
Yeah, so you're gonna be, you're probably gonna be getting really close to the number that Mark used. In fact, I'd be a little worried if, if we were off about those.
Is it bad that I feel I overpaid for my lot?
What's that?
Said I feel like I overpaid for my lot now, but that's okay.
Where am I going now, John?
Fourteen, I think we're on.
So we get down to slide nineteen.
Nineteen, wow.
Nineteen, yeah, we're, we're, there we go.
Oh, go back one.
Hold on, I'll put my glasses back on.
Yeah.
Fifteen, fifteen. So we looked at what's undeveloped in town? What, what do we have that we could actually build something on theoretically? And we looked at undeveloped land that is currently zoned commercial industrial. Now I'll make one point here. We took, this is the one place in this presentation, or, or two places in this presentation. This is the first one, where we took a little bit of license and the New England Electric properties, some of them are zoned residential agriculture down in that Four Corners area. I put those all into undeveloped commercial industrial just for illustrative purposes. And again, this is a fact base to get the discussion going. If there's a consensus that we shouldn't do that, great, we'll change it. So, we came up with a hundred eighty-seven acres of commercial industrial land that doesn't have something built on it. And we're just going down the, the list here. There's H and V in West Groton, Mass Hydro in West Groton. I think people were shocked to hear that there was an acre of Mass Hydro land in West Groton that wasn't developed. But of all of this land, New England Electric actually owns a hundred and seventy-one of the hundred and eighty-seven acres. So there are actually sixteen undeveloped acres that belong, that doesn't belong to New England Electric. You start taking away ones from West Groton, H and V, and you get down to an interesting number. It's about four acres, which is what is being developed at Four Corners right now. So with that under development, now some, we were out, we're essentially close to being out of land. If we, for commercial, unless something is either rezoned or something can be freed up from New England Electric properties.
So, just to clarify, so you have Deluxe on Main Street with four point six.
Yeah.
Did you come up with that four point six acres based on the fact that they, their building in their parking lot occupy X number of acres of their parcel and there's four point six undeveloped acres on their parcel?
No, this is a separate parcel. When you look at the, the assessor's map, New England, Deluxe Chalk actually has a couple of different lots or three or four different lots. And there's one, I believe this is the one, it's between one nineteen and their building site. There's a four, four and a half acre lot right there that is not developed. It looks kind of like yard space, but it's, it's zoned a separate piece of property.
Lawn and trees.
So.
It's a separate parcel, but in contiguous ownership?
Right.
Okay.
And that's why the, I would, for the purposes of the next slide, I took that lot out of being available as well. Because it's already owned by somebody who likes to have a lot of space around them. Yeah, Josh?
I was gonna say, before you move on to the next slide, go back please. So when you were using this slide and you're saying that it's undeveloped commercial industrial lands, there's a huge difference between undeveloped and underutilized. So you need to, in my opinion, include a slide that has all of the commercial industrial manufacturing sites and say, okay, there's X amount of acres on there, there's X amount of square foot of building, and here is the additional building based on current zoning that could occur or an adaptive reuse or knockdown of an existing site to create something else. So before you start saying, and I'm not saying that you are saying, but before you start saying there's four acres of land left outside of the New England Electric Four Corners land to utilize on that, if you factor that out, there's other components to this.
You're absolutely right. And so the Deluxe Check parcel, or sorry, the Deluxe, we didn't measure how much theoretical underutilized commercial land there is on, on a property. So one of the underlying assumptions here was you own a parcel and it's got a building on it, it's developed. So this is an area, Josh, I think that for further work to get, to get this discussion going and finding out kind of where things are, what, what, what you're, what this kind of, what you just mentioned is telling us is that, well, there may be potential in underutilized space on existing lots that are already developed. That is certainly an area that we should, we may want to look at, but we'd want to talk to, okay, who owns it? Is there any land that, there's no land like that at CBS as far as I know. H and V has space like that, but from a commercial perspective, building out in West Groton is probably far less attractive to any kind of developer than trying to put someplace along one nineteen. But all of these things are things that we should take into consideration if this carries forward.
Kevin, that wasn't a knock for a moment of, of the work that you were doing.
No, no, I didn't.
That's just an observation that I'm making that I don't want people in the public to say, oh my God, there's only four acres of land in town that could be purchased and developed, so.
Right.
So that's, in our initial objectives that we laid out, we talked about what additional land is available. So how to expand the land and how to optimize, there were two objectives.
Two objectives.
Optimization is exactly what you're talking about.
Right.
And we'll bring to you a couple of examples at the end here where land has been optimized. And it's, it's a wonderful use case, it's two different use cases actually for optimization. And it gives you some sense of what optimization means here in our town or could mean here in our town. So you'll see those a little later on.
Yep, thanks. Allison?
So I just wanted to kind of at the other end of the spectrum argue to Josh that I think it's a somewhat dangerous undertaking and a slippery slope to start looking at currently owned commercial parcels that have some building on them and, and even having that conversation around, you know, yours isn't effectively built out. Here's what we think you could do and, you know, that gets really precarious, you mean?
Yeah, but a case in point though, to just, if you don't mind on that, is Shaw's. When Shaw's Plaza was approved, it has five pads on it.
Yeah.
Currently, the Shaw's occupies the largest structure. There's a building, as part of the same building, in the far left end of the Shaw's building, that's not developed. Across where Riverbend Appliance used to be, that's not utilized, and then there's three more pads. So before you would take into consideration the concept of zoning more commercial based land, my mindset is, okay, utilize what's already approved. Let's not overdevelop in what I used to call the Westfritization of Groton in terms of opening up more land than is needed to service the community.
I think what we're gonna give you here is everything you'll need in terms of metrics and information to, to say, if that, in that scenario, what could we get? So in the scenario of optimizing the commer, the currently approved Shaw's Plaza, you now have a dollar per square foot building area in Shaw's. You're already getting the real estate property tax. You, you, the incremental value would be the build out. You, you can say, all right, well, those are two thousand square foot pads. You get this per, per square foot, the optimization of that property will be worth X to the town.
Okay, so just one thing, Josh, because we started this and did the analysis a while ago, little details tend to float away until somebody reminds you of them. In that four point four acres on Four Corners, that does include the undeveloped pads of Shaw's. So in that case, so, so those, those, because those are zoned as individual parcels. They're not part of the overall, when you look at the assessor's map for Shaw's on that corner, Four Corners, there are, I think, five separate properties that are filed in the assess, with the assessors as individual properties. So I, I, I'm pretty sure I included those in that four point four. You know, they add up to maybe one acre, the three that, that aren't there. So Allison, you?
The only other question I have, and this is more my lack of knowledge, the New England Electric, is that some sort of subsidiary of National Grid? Or what is New England Electric?
New England Electric is, they own and operate the transmission lines that run from, they cross right about at Agway in the, in the rail, railroad. And then they run across to Sandy Pond and hook into the Hydro Quebec Power Substation off Sandy Pond Road. And most of that land, it stretches from Sandy Pond Road along one nineteen almost to town, the town line. There's some lots carved out, I think, on the, right along one nineteen. But all of that land back there is owned by New England Electric and somewhere along the line, I heard that they, they want to save that as a, a buffer against the power lines and that sort of thing. So it's an area to explore because it is a, a pretty big chunk.
Are they a subsidiary of National Grid?
Pardon?
Are they a subsidiary of National Grid? Are they wholly owned entity on their own?
Good question. I don't know the answer.
I'd heard they were National Grid, but it could, I could be wrong.
It could be grid now, right. So if you, if you go to the next slide, this just kind of gets to what we were, we've been talking about. We have a hundred and eighty-seven acres of, of, of commercial industrial without a building on it. These are separate properties. So we have, I forget how many exact properties there are. And a hundred and eighty-three of those, this is the second subjective part to this, is I went down and looked at all of these individual properties and made a value judgment for various reasons of why that piece of property might not be developable. And these are areas where I'm happy to change my opinion. So, but this includes a hundred and seventy-one of the New England Electric acres that you get to about a hundred and eighty-three that probably aren't really highly valued or, or, or developable. So, that's not to say that we don't have commercial industrial development capability. We do. We have a hundred and eighty-seven acres of, of opportunity. Somebody else already owns those and, and they are not in the inventory right now of properties that might actually be attractive.
So that one eighty-seven is the sum of what was shown in the pie chart?
Correct. Yep. If you, the next slide, we just wanted to show what full development of vacant residential and commercial properties. The, if we developed all of our residential properties and we said that, okay, let's just say there's five hundred thirteen properties available, at two acre lots, give or take, we might generate another four point seven million dollars, or sorry, about another four million dollars from that. And commercial, if we could develop everything that's available to us that we, is reasonable, it could be developed, it might double what we currently get for commercial revenue. So you can see that of that eighteen hundred acres, it's owned residential, commercial, there's more tax revenue potential in, in those properties than there are in what we are currently zoned commercial or industrial. So if we, if you go to the next slide, this is where Jack addressed Josh's point. We have, we have two examples in town of where a commercial property has been repurposed. One of them was repurposed because of an accident and the other was repurposed because of an economic decision. So the old Groton Inn generated about thirty-three thousand dollars a year in total tax to town. The new Groton Inn, we got this estimate from the assessor's office, looks like it's probably right on, on the order of about a hundred and sixty thousand. The PC Mayette Building, when it was there, generated eleven thousand four hundred and twenty-three. And now with the Medical Building there, generates close to thirty thousand. So these are, oh, in the Four Corners area is expected to generate about seventy thousand. And when we did this, this was kind of a rough estimate because we didn't know exactly what was going to be there and what, what the assessed value would be. So this is certainly an option to take advantage of as these properties come up. Not sure there's an approach that you could actually take to encourage that. But that would be something to, to think about as it might, you might not think too long about it. And I, I think, so what we've come up with here is, I, I.
Excellent point.
Yeah.
So, and this is for discussion and for lots of people to think about. But when you think about what was here, what, what was at the inn before and what's there now? You can have your value judgment, your opinion about what was there and what is there and how does that meet my opinion of the town? When you think about what was at the Mayette property before and what's there now, you can think about what does that do for my opinion of the town and do I like it? But these are the consequences, good or bad, I'm not, no value judging. These are the consequences of achieving that kind of revenue growth through optimization. So another, we talked about the front of Deluxe, right, a great big green space today. The consequence of optimizing that would be a building instead of a green space. That might be a good thing, it might not be a good thing, but this is an example of what you get and what you give when, when you get it.
Does your Groton Inn new, does that include meals tax?
No.
No.
Total?
No, it does not include meals or room tax.
Or room.
Or room tax, right.
Does it include personal property taxes?
No.
So it's just purely the real estate?
Right. We, we left those three out.
No, I'm not, I don't have a problem with it, I just want to understand it.
Yeah, as I, as I was doing this analysis, there's one thing that, that, that occurred to me about what, what the information that I was looking at. Groton, how Groton appears is the sum total of all of the decisions that we've made for the last three hundred and fifty years or fifty-three years. And so there's a lot of institution behind this, a lot of culture behind it. So one of the things that we're, we're really trying hard not to do is we're not advocating for anything here. We're not advocating for commercial development or for economic development. What we're really advocating for, if we were going to advocate anything, is a fact base that we can use to help us make more informed decisions going forward. And also to maybe set some things aside that are, are maybe wishful thinking or, and, but they're not realistic and, and practical in terms of what, what we have and what we want. So with that, if we can go just to the last slide.
So, so if we're gonna pass in commercial growth, it's likely gonna mean that we need to change one or more of the following things. And we can do, we could, we could do the PC Mayette to
Pediatrics West.
Repair store to the Medical Office Building. That was a roughly a two hundred and fifty percent growth in commercial revenue. You could do that to the entire downtown strip and get two hundred and fifty percent growth on, on revenue from the entire downtown strip. I forget what the downtown strip is worth, the Village Center, but let's call it, let's call it half million dollars, just as an example. So you could get two hundred and fifty percent growth. You could end up with, with one point two million dollars in revenue growth. And, well, actually, it'd be like seven hundred thousand dollars of growth. And you would have that change end to end on the Village. And so there is, so that is what you get when you do commercial development. I'm not judging whether it's good or bad, but that's what change means. So in order to get this change, we are likely going to need to do a couple of things. Change our zoning code to increase land for use in residential, or sorry, commercial industrial. Recall that that land is already paying the same dollar per. Recall that that land is already paying the same dollar per acre tax today as residential land than it is, than, than it will if you turn it to a commercial land. So you don't instantly get anything different if you make something commercial. And by large, you saw that the building area for commercial is largely paying about the same as residential. So you may not get an awful lot more, but you could increase the available land through zoning changes. You could increase building value by adjusting building codes. So we have restrictions downtown on what will allow to be built in the village center in terms of height, et cetera. The way that the Mayette Building was improved in its value is it built up. So we, we can change our building codes and allow more valuable buildings to be built on the same acreage. We can certainly do that. What that'll mean is that we're going to get, and there will be pressure from applicants to allow that change. Property owners will want a better return on their investment and they will come to us and ask for us to change these things. So we should be prepared to see that. If we push for more commercial development, we should expect to see and to have to grant variances to things like wetlands, extensions and zoning and building code variances. We will, would likely need some additional water and sewer extensions. I guess I will close with this one piece that we sort of alluded to, and it was the thing that we talked about, that I talked about when I said the difference between commercial revenue and economic development. Economic development being the overall health of a community, commercial revenue being just tax revenue. It may be that our commercial development, maybe even indeed our economic development, needs to focus more on goals and objectives other than revenue generation. We see that we get something like $1.3 million in commercial revenue. If we doubled, if we, I don't know how we do it, but if we doubled all the commercial stuff that we've got in our town, we could get another $1.3 million, which is not, what's that?
3% higher.
3%, we could get 3% growth, but, but you'd have to give something to get that. Economic development in our town may want to think of things other than just revenue generation. There are other values to economic development, even to commercial development, quality of life, et cetera. And I think what we've tried to do here is to give you, give us all the information to look at this and to start making those judgments, to put those, that's why we've given you these perspectives about the Groton Inn and the bump in revenue, Mayettes and the bump in revenue, the total square footage and the available footage. And these are, this is information you can use to try to assess which way you want to push for. And at the next town meeting, when we need more money for X or Y and Z, we can answer the question, why don't we just grow our commercial base to do this? We can perhaps answer that question with this information. So can you go to the last slide? So we hope that we've spurred, and glad to talk about now, or with our community going forward, we hope we've spurred these kinds of questions and provided information that can help to answer these questions. I think there's a lot of implications here for the select board, not on a point decision that you have to make tonight or at any one time, but ways to think about how you make decisions justified by economic development or justified by commercial revenue. And we're also hoping that our town can talk about these things a little bit in a more unified manner as we provide this education. We, we had hoped to be able to present this to town meeting because town meeting is a great place to have, to give a common message. I don't think that's going to be practical, frankly. Town meeting doesn't stand for this kind of presentation so much anymore. And that's probably a good thing, but we have other ways to get this out. And coming here tonight for you, having this recorded on a link that we can send out to people in a variety of ways is one way to, to help to push this story and this information out. So thank you very much for having us.
Thanks very much. John?
I just have a quick, when we look at the notion of the growth, the potential growth in residential compared to commercial, was any, did you take into any consideration about the added expenses associated with the education of the children who would occupy those new residents?
We did not.
Because that can be a big number.
It could be, but-
Probably would be.
But at the same time, there's another, another side to this is that we have, there are a lot of studies out there that tell us that enrollment might start drifting south. And you might actually want to have a few more kids in town to spread your fixed costs of education over because you're, you're going underutilized, you're paying for the same number of teachers, paying for the same building. And so to me, this is an important question for us going forward to study because there is a new dynamic now with population changes and things like that, that make that concern have a different, possibly a different value going forward than maybe what we've always thought about. It's not to say that it's going to, that having more kids in town doesn't increase the cost. All I'm suggesting is that maybe we want to look at that and, and just see, with a set of numbers, how does that impact us actually rather than theoretically.
To save Marlena a heart attack, there's debate about what's actually happening to roll the numbers and the trends in declining or inclining. So let's, let's take that off the table and please, let's, let's leave that to our, our specialists in the school department.
So, but, I mean, but the question came up in almost every presentation that we made.
Yep.
And, and we found ourselves needing to dispel at least one rumor and that was, or one misunderstanding. And a lot of stuff here was an attempt to address common understandings and determine whether they were misunderstandings. There's, you oftentimes hear that every new house brings two kids. And so every time you had a new house, you add two kids forever. And that's just not the case because, what do we have, 4,000 households in town?
So I'm going to give this another five minutes.
Back to 2,000 kids?
We start wrapping this up.
Something like that. How many kids, 2,000 kids in school?
24.
2,400? Yeah, so we've got, so we've got something like 0.6 kids in school. So new homes might bring in two children, but eventually those homes turn over and then they become more like the norm. And that doesn't really address a particular issue.
For the future, and I'm sure it's the case today, the school district and the school committee has projections done by people who make a profession out of providing insight into what's going to happen in a community relative to student population and so forth. That collaboration there seems to me it would be useful.
Completely agree. And the, there's collaboration here, I think, for not only with schools, but for all of the groups that we've already spoken to. We had a lot of really good questions and feedback for each one of the groups that we presented to. And we tried to incorporate as much of that as possible into what you see here, but we also tried to keep this just really focused on the, the single point of commercial development and industrial development potential from a property value and a building value perspective. It's really easy to go down, get out into the weeds if we try to step out and start looking at too many other things. We'll leave that to future discussions. Josh?
Sure. Overall, I think this is very, very good. Just a couple caveats or the things that I'd like to see you add. Can you please state that the numbers that you put in here are pure property taxes only and do not include things like personal property and-
Real estate taxes.
Just, just straight along these numbers.
No bills tax, no-
You also showed a, a very large percentage of the land in town being in chapter 61, which it is. I don't question that, but something else that would be very valuable to have would be tax exempt status non-61, things like Lawrence Academy, Groton School, Indian Hill Music Center, Seven Hills, and, and many others. And those occupy tremendous amounts of land, in some cases, large amounts of municipal services too. And having that as a piece of the pie slice would be very valuable, I think, to have as well.
Yeah, just so, another one of those things about what's included and what isn't included. We drew a line to try to cover, address tax generating property rather than including too much on non-tax generating. And the, we can do that. In fact, one of the things I wanted to do was just to include something on where, where's all the rest of the land go, what categories does go into? I think that, I think that's a good point. That, that may be something we should probably put right in here so people can see how the land is distributed. So there's town forest and conservation land and nonprofits.
It just wasn't relevant to generating revenue or not.
Yeah.
If not generating revenue, it goes in this pie, it's part of the pie. It is generating revenue because of this part of the pie.
Right, but it's, it's your first pie chart and it confused me.
Good point.
It's the first pie chart and I found it confusing, first of all, the title, the chapter land, but the exempt and chapter land. Just give a little more detail about what you mean about that. Everybody can understand that you're talking then about the, you know, schools, churches, conservation land, name Indian Hill, Seven Hills, Groton School, Lawrence Academy, whatever.
Kevin, for your-
Legally exempt from paying taxes.
For your application, 61 regular is forest land and 61B is recreational land and 61A is agriculture land.
Yeah, thank you.
So it's, it's forest land, agriculture and then recreational land. And it's nothing B, A and B for the government. I did see one member of the public want to speak. Do you want to grab a microphone, ask a question?
Yeah, I just listened to a very bleak story about opportunities for economic development in Groton. Two years ago in December, I presented a new economic development mission and vision for the Economic Development Committee. I presented this to the selectmen. And basically what it said was position Groton as the destination community for arts, music and recreation. At the time, I knew more about Indian Hill coming in than most of you did. And I saw what was going to happen as something that's similar that happened in Lenox, Mass. When Tanglewood was created and the BSO took it over. And as a result, they have a very small percentage, like 77% of the taxes around the residents. And the reason for that is that there was a lot of economic development that occurred along the way. As you heard tonight, a lot of these numbers are strictly on property tax revenue. They do not include meal tax, they do not include room tax, they do not include personal property tax. And to help understand what personal property tax is, first of all, it's only for commercial and industrial properties. And one way to look at it is if you turn a building upside down, everything that falls out can be taxed. It could be beds, it could be kitchen equipment, it could be x-ray machines, it could be MRI machines. And you take a building like the Groton Inn and you turn that upside down, you've got a huge opportunity there for personal property tax. I don't know what the number is right now. You've got a similar thing that's going to happen at Four Corners. If you look at the meal tax right now, the meal tax for 30, for FY 2018 was $134,000. A couple of years ago, it was zero because we didn't have a meal tax. And that's going to increase, we've got two more restaurants coming online. I like to look at these things in the future, not today, but three and four and five, six years out. And I think what's going to happen organically, if we don't try to make it happen, it'll happen organically, there'll be increasing pressure for additional restaurants, additional lodging, additional retail around the town, which might require rezoning. And we'll have to get used to that. We just rezoned one property, I think on Main Street back in the spring, if I remember correctly. Room taxes, starting July of next year, will bring in 50-plus thousand dollars. And the following year, it'll double because it'll jump from 3% to 6%. I think what you'll see, as I said a few minutes ago, is that you're going to see additional pressure for additional lodging in the town. And you'll see people trying to free up land to make that happen. As far as the, the question that was asked, and I've already talked with Marlena about this, right now, the average tax bill in the town of Groton is about $8,000. On average, each new residential house brings in about 1.1 kid. 1.1 kid can cost between, depending on how you calculate it, between $4,000 and $10,000 to educate. Now, it depends upon what the capacity of classrooms is at the time, but that's the number. So you begin, if you want to focus on residential housing, you've got a problem because it's going to be eaten up by the cost of education. And I think that has been brought up tonight as well. And whereas commercial development does not increase the cost of education, and NOAA does 55-plus active retirement community development, bring in additional educational costs. So I want to caution everybody that we have to think further out in the future and not just today or tomorrow, that you will see major pressure on the town of Groton for economic development, which will probably require a lot more rezoning than people might want to think of. Downtown Groton, once Indian Hill is here and the Groton Inn is operating and the restaurants are operating, I, I think you're going to see a lot more demand, but we need additional retail space right in the center of town, which could mean additional houses being sold and developed for either retail or arts or whatever. And I think that will happen. So I tend to look at this positively. Now, the other point that came up was Four Corners and National Grid. There's 16 acres, if I remember right, Mark?
Yep.
On San Juan Road that's actually zoned as business. And there's like another 150, something like that behind it, that zone I read. Now, Mark and Jay Ash from the state have been trying to wrestle that land away from National Grid, but without a lot of help from the, from the select board and using political leverage from, from the, our senators and other areas, we have not been suc-, without that, we have not been successful in leveraging and getting National Grid to free up that land. I've talked to those people. It has nothing to do with EMI, happens to do, they own it, they've owned it since like 1984, and they have no reason to give it up. So we've got to try to come up and give them a reason to talk to us, to allow us to get into negotiations, at least on the 16 acres and maybe the rest of it. Because that could be, be an incredible area for additional lodging areas, if you will, which has happened in many areas. I'm willing to bet that 10, 20 years ago, people would have said, the point, it has no value because it's so far away, it's on the edge. And now look at it, it's bringing in millions and millions of dollars to the town of Littleton. Thank you.
So I hope that in time, market forces may come to bear and make an offer too good for National Grid to resist as more and more of this property becomes unavailable and that's what's left. And if I wear National Grid shoes, although I shouldn't be saying this publicly, I may decide that my value to wait versus my value to keep is in my favor, given this presentation. I'll, one more, one more, one more question, we have to move on. We've got a lot of stuff left in our agenda.
Mine's not a question, it's just a comment. I really want to thank you for this. This is information that I would certainly not have been able to figure out myself and I appreciate knowing it, I appreciate the effort that you put into it. Thank you.
Thank you. You get a lot of help from a lot of people.
Okay. I think we're on number two of the first quarter. I'm just verifying where we're at.
Can you try? Are you looking at it?
So this is the time, this is the opportunity for the board to look at the first quarter financials. I want to call your attention to a couple of things with them. If I can get my mouse to work here. You know, we're right probably on track to where we should be last year at this time. In the first quarter fiscal year 18, we're at 24.25% revenues. This year, we're 23.23%. Could be a timing issue on a couple of things, but there's a troubling trend that I saw that I, I want to call to your attention because I think this is very, very important to the town moving forward as there's pressure on me to increase estimated receipts as I put together the, the operating budget. And I call your attention to motor vehicle excise tax. Last year at this time, we collected $161,201.
I'm sorry, Mark, where is it?
I'm looking at the motor vehicle excise, second line down.
A second line, okay, got it.
We had collected $161,201. This year, we're, we're down at $139,919,000. The year before that, I went back and looked at fiscal year 17 when we did this and we were about $166,000. and we were about a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. I'm concerned that the economy on motor vehicles is drying up in Groton and people aren't buying as many cars as they had in the past. Now, it could be a timing issue with the commitment, but I saw an email today from the Treasury Collector that says that we had three commitments in the first quarter of fiscal year eighteen and three commitments in the first quarter of fiscal year nineteen. So I want to call everyone's attention to that as there's pressure to increase that number. It looks like we're getting a little bit of a downturn in motor vehicle excise tax. We'll have a better handle on it come January or February when the first commitment of the big commitment of two thousand and nineteen goes out.
I'm sorry, what does commitment mean in this context?
The commitment is when the registry sends us all the bills and that's called a commitment.
Sorry, thank you.
There were like six commitments per year, six, maybe eight commitments per year. Depends on how many cars are bought.
The one in February is the big one.
Is the big one. So I just wanted to call your attention to that. But overall, you know, it looks like our revenues are doing well. As Art had pointed out before, meals tax is doing really, really well. We're up at forty-one thousand versus thirty-six thousand this time last year. Payment lower taxes, you just can't tell where that's coming in. The bills come in any time during the year. But I think Groton Schools came in in October and this goes through September. So, you know, I think we're in pretty good shape moving forward. I just wanted to call to your attention motor vehicle excise tax because it has me concerned. In terms of expenses, I think we're tracking pretty well in terms of where we will be. I will point out that I know I'm going to have a problem within the police department budget in terms of overtime because of some injured on duty issues that we're having there and a retirement that we thought we were going to get that we don't have right now. So there might be an issue that we're going to have to address, but we're tracking pretty well there. So overall, I'd say, you know, first quarter, we're tracking where we should be. We're right on target with where we were last year. You know, operating expenses this time last year was thirty-five-point-four-four, this year it's thirty-five-point-three-five. So we're tracking pretty good. Overall, I say our financial health is in good shape. I just wanted to point out the excise tax. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Becky.
Okay. I just, I got a couple of questions. The data on the top in purple where it says September thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
I'm sorry, it's fiscal year twenty nineteen, September thirtieth, twenty.
That's kind of what I figured it must mean, all right.
Just a typo.
Yep, okay. And the, on this chart, the very last column over there on the right, percent of budget change.
That's year-over-year from fiscal year nineteen to eighteen versus eighteen.
From year to year, okay. And I wondered about the line that is other charges for service, Dunstable.
Yep.
And your note over there in the two-hundred-and-seventy-three percent dispatch, regionalization, lockup service, I don't understand what.
Then again, that's the tyranny of small numbers, so that-
Yeah, it was three-hundred-eight-hundred.
... money we get from Dunstable for dispatch services, we haven't collected the bulk of it yet and we won't. That money is collected later in the year, but they do give us little dribs and drabs when they use our lockup service. So we might get a hundred dollars or a couple of dollars.
Basically, they've had more prisons this year than last year in the first quarter.
So, you know, it's showing two-hundred-and-seventy-three percent. That's because we collected five-hundred dollars more than we did at this point last year.
Okay, thank you.
So it's just, it's just an anomaly due to the small numbers you're looking at here.
I think one way you can read this, if I can help, you may already have figured, already do this, but I look at that last column and I look at numbers above a hundred as we're doing better than we were this time last year. The numbers below a hundred is we're doing worse than we were this time last year. And then I also look at the number, it's huge, like two-hundred, I say, oh, that's because it was three-hundred versus eight-hundred. Like it's insignificant statistically. So there's two ways I look at that when I review this report.
Mostly, I didn't understand what that column was all about, so. And the, we got something about the Chapter Ninety state aid increasing, and that doesn't play, come into this format at all.
You know, Allison had sent me an email today asking about that, and so did Marlena send me an email. We usually get about five-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars a year in Chapter Ninety money. Now, that comes directly from the state and it's used for roads.
Only to use roads.
Only can be used for roads or road-related materials. Some towns have bought trucks with it, some towns have bought pavers with it. It depends on what the particular town. Tom Delaney does an excellent job using that money to pave our roads. And that is the only appropriation. We do appropriate eighty thousand dollars in the budget for things that Chapter Ninety doesn't cover related to roads, but all paving is done out of Chapter Ninety money and that has no impact whatsoever on the operating budget.
Okay.
And we'll tell you, this year, and this happened four years ago, in an election year, you see an increase.
I did note the timing of getting that letter.
Yes. If you go back, Becky, to two thousand and twelve or two thousand and fourteen, there was a similar bump in Chapter Ninety money. But that money will be used by Tom Delaney, he'll pave a couple of more roads. The other question that Allison had asked me is how do we determine what roads are going to be paved? Since we took money out of the operating budget, and I think that, Josh, you might have been on the board when that happened years ago, and we went solely on Chapter Ninety money, those decisions have always been made by the Public Works Director. And we took the entire political process out of picking roads and made it purely administrative in the hands of Tom Delaney. He does go over the list with me, but I go with him and his recommendations on what roads need to be paved. And that's how that's, I hope that answers the questions that you asked, Allison.
It largely does. I guess the other question I would have is when you and Tom go through that process is consideration given to equipment we might need or kind of other non-paving things that can come out of Chapter Ninety?
That's a great question. One of the things that Tom is looking at this year that he might purchase out of the Chapter Ninety money with some of that extra money that came in is what he calls a hot box. And basically what it does is when you, asphalt needs to be really hot when it gets put on the ground in order for it to bind and everything. In the wintertime, when you're doing cold patch, it's very hard to keep the stuff hot when you pick it up at the batching plant and you bring it into town. He was thinking of spending some of that money on a hot box so that he can improve the way he patches the potholes and things like that in town. I think it's a good use of money, he may do that, he hasn't decided yet, but that isn't his thought process right now. Hot box, that sounds like-
So is any of that Chapter Ninety bump apply to anything that's on our capital plan or anything for the next couple of years?
No, no, as I said, purely road repairs, road paving, purely road paving.
Road maintenance as well.
Yeah. And there's nothing in the capital plan, Allison, unless we make, I know some towns like the Tonah Graften use some of their Chapter Ninety money to buy a dump truck related to roads.
Right, and that's what I'm thinking about.
Yeah, but you've got to get special approval from the state to do that. So in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, correct me if I have to go back and look, I believe we're scheduled to buy another dump truck. Might be a potential there down the road. That'll save about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
And we can't argue effectively or get waivers that would allow us to put that extra Chapter Ninety money toward a building that would help store?
No, buildings are, absolutely, that's a great question.
Thank you.
We like how you think.
I do like how you think.
However. I think, I think if nobody else has a comment, I think Bud had a, what's that you want to say?
Yeah, just on the revenue one, Mike, so you talked about this the last three quarters, I think, about how we pulled in taxes early, not taxes, I shouldn't say that. We sold our receivables.
Yeah.
And so when you see this next quarter, it's going to look very unfavorable because of that, because of what we did. And I think if you remember, we talked about this could be rolling out through Q three and Q four, I think Q one and Q two of this year.
Right.
Because this revenue was under, which historically we're not under. So the thing is, I just want to make sure that we look at the, if we don't do this again, which I don't think they're going to plan on selling receivables or not.
He will if there's anything there, but what, you just reminded me of something. When you get the second quarter report through December thirty-first, you are going to see a major decrease in fiscal nineteen receipts versus fiscal eighteen. Because remember last year, everybody prepaid their third quarter property taxes to get the tax break last year. So don't let that stile you when you see that we're at fifty percent of the revenue.
Yeah, I just want to see if-
That's a good point.
Yeah, and just make sure Mike is comfortable that, you know, when this thing rolls out, we're still not seeing an impact, but we're not going to be able to collect that stuff because it was the last year. And not just the people paying the first two quarters of taxes, but also the selling of receivables, that double hit, like you said, was a big number.
Yep.
Selling of receivables?
And that's why penalties on interest and taxes are at sixty-one percent versus-
I shouldn't say selling, but Mike can give the proper terms. It was, the taxes that weren't yet collected that get into-
Receiver ship.
Tax, receivership, we had somebody else collect.
We sold the tax liability.
Subcontract.
We sold the tax liability, Becky.
We got paid for it immediately and someone out to collect the dollars.
Thank you.
And we may have gotten ninety-five percent of it, seven-hundred percent of it, but we got the money.
Right.
Marlena?
Just a question regarding the car excise tax, I'm sorry, it went on for a second. The five-year average, I know it's gone down a little bit, so I'm wondering, but based on the five-year average, that number is still higher than the five-year average, correct?
Yes, it is, that's correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure. What plan should I have?
No, I just, I just, you know me, Marlena, I'm very conservative.
I know, I appreciate it.
Any other questions on revenues on the quarter report? So we also spend this time to do the goals review. And I'm going to say that we just did this a month ago, so it's really not much, but I do want to call you-
Are there any updates?
Yeah, that's, thank you.
Two months, two months, Mark, September and November.
Yeah, I said two months. So there really wasn't a lot to take place, but I will tell you that we did complete the audit as I presented last month. I presented to you the spreadsheet that we're going to follow. So I'd say that goal is completed. No new update here. As far as the creation of a policy regarding recreational marijuana, I say that that goal is complete as of tomorrow.
Tomorrow will tell us, yes.
Yep, so that goal's complete. No new update on regionalization. And of course, I still talk about Prescott, I downplayed my goal completed a little bit on the-
I know she didn't undo it, though.
On the update.
It's still there.
Yeah, it's still there.
I downplayed it, no, it's there.
It is there. No new update on compensation plans, no new update on regionalization. We did complete the OPEB since last month, since last review. You guys adopted, the board adopted, the OPEB policy. So the one thing that the board asked me to do is incorporate OPEB appropriations. So I'd say this goal is near completion.
And we're waiting on town councils to agree with that.
Correct, yep. And then with regard to affordable housing and housing development, since I typed no new update last week, I do have an update for you. One of the things that I have been working on is a potential development along the country club property. One of the ideas that was brought to me by a couple of members of the community is to look into the opportunity to develop property along the country club on town-owned land and maybe enter into an agreement with a developer to come in and develop that land and get like a long-term lease from the town. So what I did last week is I met with an engineer who's going to put together a quote for me to come in and do a conceptual plan to see if it's possible. The biggest draw, the biggest issue there would have to do with bringing the sewer up Lover's Lane into the property. But I think it has a lot of potential and I'm working with the Affordable Housing Trust on getting some funding to pay for the engineering. And we've also filed an application with the Community Preservation Act for housing funds to pay for a substantial engineering study with the hope of going out to bid sometime next spring on the project. So I've been working with Becky and the Affordable Housing Trust on this. I think it does have some exciting potential. And I'll keep the board apprised of our progress moving forward. We'll probably come in with a formal presentation to the board when the time is right. But I want to get this on your radar now as the Housing Trust has been talking about it. And I think, Becky, you mentioned that last time we had a meeting, I think you did, maybe you did, maybe I did.
I had heard a little bit, but I should get in and talk with you some more.
So are we going, are you okay with an eight-hole course?
Well, I hope they're going to have to sign up for memberships.
Yes, but it's still going to be a nine-hole course, we're not going to touch the course.
And just, Mark, the way you were phrasing it, along the country club, you're not actually talking about land along one nineteen.
No, no, this is off of, in the back, where the pavilion is right now, where the tennis courts are, in that area there, along the, was that the second and third?
So you said you met with an engineer and someone is-
They're developing a bid for me on to develop a concept plan that I'm going to bring to the Affordable Housing Trust. I guess they're meeting on the thirteenth. I think that's their next meeting, I could have the date wrong. So anyway, I just wanted to give you that update. Into the town manager goals, the senior center building project, it is on your ongoing issues list. And when I met with John last week, John asked me to get into a little bit more detail than other, things are going well on the thing, which they are going well. But John asked me to maybe once a month or once every other month, provide a more detailed update on the senior center project. So I would like Barry to review, to read something into the record on that.
Yeah, and let's not forget to do this.
Yes, I know, I know, I won't forget. The senior center is currently on schedule for completion by July twenty-seventh of two thousand and nineteen. The construction right now is a critical point with the steel frame scheduled to be erected by early December and the building enclosed by the end of January two thousand and nineteen. Any material delay or labor dispute that sometimes happens still, you know, could cause an issue, but right now, we feel confident moving forward that that's going to be okay. To date, the site work is fifty percent completed, which is outstanding. The drainage system, manholes and water utility service for domestic and fire protection systems are installed. By the end of November, the septic system, leach field, and main electric service are scheduled for installation. Final grading and paving obviously will happen in the spring. The underslab utilities under the building and the concrete slab have been installed in the building. The steel frame delivery is expected on Monday or Tuesday of next week. It'll take two to three weeks to erect, is not a lot to the steel since it's only one story. Subsequent to the steel erection, the light gauge metal framing, the exterior wall studs, sheeting, and roof will be installed, making the building weather tight to allow for the commencement of the interior finishes and system installations. While there was some delays with the steel, we feel that they're getting back on track and the contractor feels confident moving forward. So I'd say things are going well with the senior center. But I'll, as John asked, and I think it's a good point, to provide a more detailed update as we get through the project. With the rest of the town manager goals, we reviewed the selectman goals. Recreational marijuana, again, we did that. OPEB, that goal has been completed. The municipal operations is completed. Have no new update on economic development. With regards to the Select Board happenings and engaging the public, Mike Chason has been working really, really hard on the website update. He gave me a small preview of it on Friday of last week. And I have to tell you, I'm very excited to roll this out to the Select Board when it's ready to go, which I hope to be sometime in December. So there's a lot of good interaction for the public to find out what's happening with the municipal government. So that's the update there. Mr. Chairman?
John has a question.
Yes, sir.
No, you're, sorry. On your number seven, part of my reason for suggesting that we provide a little bit more detailed updates on the projects we have going, Ames Wright had A.
Seven A.
Provide the public with updates and access to issues before the Select Board and their status. And if they just hear, it's okay. We may be asking for more faith than some people want to give us. So by having some facts like you did, which I'm pleased with, I think it's more informative for the community.
Yep. Excellent point. One other thing I wanted to talk to the board about with regards to the capital plan, we had a lot of conversation last week on capital planning and things like that. I had a great meeting with Allison and John last Thursday separately, and we talked about capital planning moving forward. I have a few ideas to improve our capital plan in terms of information and delivery, and I plan on rolling that out. Allison and I talked about a couple of ideas there that made sense. So one of the things I'd like to do with the board moving forward is to present a revised capital plan, little different. I mean, I like the capital plan we present now, it's good, but it could always get better. So I have a couple of ideas that I want, based on good feedback from Allison, I'm going to try to incorporate in that plan moving forward. So as we get into the budget process, you'll see some of that, and I think that'll help you with your committee that you're trying to form. I know John sent out and I forwarded to the board his proposal on the definition, not proposal, but the definition of capital plan, I'm sorry, on what a capital plan is. I misspoke there for a second, I apologize.
A set of information.
Examples of what capital means and other committees.
And I said for information purposes, not to violate the upper meaning law.
Yes, as an example of research.
Yes. So, you know, we'll continue to work on that as we go forward. We'll incorporate some of that stuff into the capital plan as well.
So regarding this whole question, I don't, I don't want it to disappear off of our-
Which question?
Agenda that we will discuss again, forming a capital planning committee.
It's still on, it's still on the list of things to be put on to-
It's on the ongoing list.
Right, and, uh, I know it's not on our agenda tonight, but one of the questions that we had raised was the definition of what is capital, and so my suggestion, in what you're going to give us, Mark, an improved capital plan, was, it would be, if you would spell out how you have defined capital.
That is my intent, that's what I'm saying.
So that we can start to come to some kind of consensus around that, as certainly a first step in, in then deciding what we wanna do about a committee.
That's, that's exactly what I was saying, but I, I want, I wanna keep this on the forefront, I, I have some ideas that Allison helped me formulate in terms of incorporating it into the capital plan, so that is my intention, to do that, yes, it's on the forefront, absolutely, but I wanna give you some more information.
And I really appreciate all of the information that was gathered and, and shared with us, and I, and I think it deserves, um, some discussion at a board meeting.
Agreed, um, I asked the board to ratify my appointment, one of the election workers that had signed up, uh, that we appointed cannot make it tomorrow, and Michael was scrambling, and Michelle Paulette stepped to the plate. So I asked the board tonight to ratify my appointment of Michelle Paulette as an election worker, to keep the, um, town clerk sane.
And this is on our agenda as an emergency unforeseen item?
Unforeseen item, just, just give it up Friday afternoon.
Yeah, so-
So move second?
Uh, any discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Heard that unanimous, thank you, Michelle, for volunteering the last minute for us.
Um, Mr. Chairman, in terms of the ongoing issues, um, we, we talked about, um, the senior center project, um, no update on the major policy, no update on the charter.
Uh, that, wasn't that what Josh said he wanted to make?
He wanted to talk to me about it on Thursday, yeah. Uh, the charter, uh, we will know update, committee charter capital plan we just talked about, Route 119 sidewalk is ongoing, uh, Florence Worch Elementary School, I do have an update on that, the first meeting of the committee is December, the first week of December, I think it's the fourth, Allison?
Fourth, yeah.
Fourth or sixth, so they are starting to ramp that up, so Allison and I will be attending that meeting, and we'll have updates for the board at that time. Uh, the task force met tonight, and they're continuing their work, I think their next step that they're trying to do right now is to get a, uh, information, uh, letter out to the public on it, they were working on refining that tonight.
So, I guess the question that comes up in this, as we are now in November and we are approaching December, is, I would love for this to be part of a budget discussion, it's going to be one, and I'm wondering if there's some sort of timeline that you have heard that they have been willing to-
Based on the meeting tonight and their planned public outreach and getting this information out, there's no way they're gonna have their work done by December thirty-first when I'm to present the budget to you. So I think any recommendations for them, unless something happens, I could be wrong, my, you know, my instinct based on tonight's meeting is that it won't be ready, but if it comes in in January, you'll just have to incorporate it. Following the guidance that you gave me last week-
Yeah, yeah.
I couldn't put it in my budget anyway-
Right.
-to you, so, right?
Right.
Yeah, so, um, I think it'll probably be January, October that you'll see that, and that'll be a whole nother discussion for the board and the thing to have as part of the budget deliberations.
Okay. Um, thank you.
Highway garage update, just to let you know, um, the building committee is gonna hold their first meeting Thursday morning, we're all posted, it's gonna be up at the, um, highway garage itself.
Library roof, or have we skipped?
Oh, library roof, I have no update on the library.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the highway garage, the building committee's gonna have their first meeting Thursday morning, and they'll set their, uh, schedule and how they're gonna proceed, uh, at, at that time, so have an update for you at your meeting of the nineteenth, uh, and that's it, no update on Pepperell landfill, and we already talked about OPEB.
Can, can we, can we go back to Pepperell landfill and someone help me help the citizens of Groton understand why we have Pepperell landfill on a Groton select board agenda?
Yep, I can tell you, um, because of the potential routes that the truck traffic from Boston would come up to the, the fill, the, the routes right now are Route Three to either 113 or the 111 up in, up in Hollis, but there is a potential of 119 being a potential, correct? So we just wanna have it on our, our list just in case, just so we know what's happening.
So, we know, so, okay, but what, what, from a policy point of view, what potential realities does the select board face in dealing with this situation? I mean, we can't, we're a neighbor, we can't help, we can't tell someone what they can do, we can't do their town, and there's only so many restrictions you wanna public throw away, right? I mean, you have to, there, there are certain laws that restrict what you can and can't do in public throwaway.
Plus, we don't control most of 119, only the stretch in the center.
Exactly, we don't have a center stretch, um, and we have to go around that stretch and use report or something like that.
That's true, yep.
Right, so, um, I know it's on our agenda, and I know we're concerned about it, but let's just be obvious to the people that, uh, you know, there may not be much, the common policy point of view, that we can do about, uh, neighboring town, just like we can't do, if a lot of traffic's now going up 119, so people from Townsend and, and Pepperell and Shirley can get to the point, that's life, everybody, you know, that's life in Groton, so. We just have to be maybe a little more conspicuous on the roads there with our, with our police officers. Now, Allison, then John.
I was just gonna point out that I think part of the concern in keeping this, you know, somewhat at the forefront of our minds is concern over environmental impacts, that, again, I'm not sure what, if anything, we could do officially, but there are concerns, I think, beyond just traffic through our community.
There's certainly concerns that citizens groups can put together, if they, like, like what happened with the, the pipeline committee and things like that, and other things like that, if, you know, but I'm not sure that as solo as the board, we have much influence over Pepperell's actions.
Agreed.
John, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to-
Um, there's some, there's some chance that, um, we could influence the, the non-use of the road up to Dunstable from Hollis Street for trucks above a certain size.
Right, yes, you're right, we can say-
And, uh, we went through this on Mill Street, um, it took a long, long time, um, and we had to go to the state, it had to be approved, it wasn't necessarily the state, but the district highway, or somebody had to approve it, and, and it just took a long time, but if we don't fight for it, um, we can't stop them on 119, but, but we could preserve that residential and, and school on that road-
Right.
-from that stuff lumbering by all day.
You're, you're, yeah, that's absolutely good, correct, we could, there are, there are limits we can put, and weight limits, and-
Yep, size.
Size limits and things like that, and if, if it gets approved at a state level, and we get a, um, a variance from the, the through fair laws, right? Um, all right, uh, any, Mr. Chairman, are you done?
I am done talking, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, my goodness, let's get that on record. Are there any select board liaison reports?
Just briefly, um, so I've been going to the EDC meetings, um, and as, as it came up tonight, I think it's relevant, um, the last three meetings, we've had have been kind of workshops with the intent, we're, we're looking at the mission vision and charge from the select board to the EDC, and kind of talking about some questions that came up out of the presentation we saw this evening, um, and some consideration of, you know, what, what is the, what is the reality? How much can we impact, what areas, what is the perception of our committee in the public? How do we wanna work to change that? Um, so the outcome of that, we're hoping in the next couple of meetings to, to fine-tune what we're looking to do, what's realistic, what we can do as a volunteer committee, and then we'll be looking to schedule to bring that back to the select board for discussion.
Great, I look forward to that, I've heard, I've heard ruminations of that as well, and had some individual discussions, you know, so I'm, I'm much in support of that, and I look forward to hearing the results of, of what the Economic Development Committee thinks about economic development, instead of what the select board has told them to think about economic development, so it's great.
Can I, can I ask a question about that? Um, it, it concerns me a little bit that we, um, are probably gonna have another empty property in the center of town when Bank of America supposedly closes, and the Donalins property does not seem to, nothing seems to be happening, and there's also the property at the base of Hollis Street that's set up for sale or leased, signed on it for years. Um, does, does the Economic Development Committee, is it an appropriate source? I mean, is it an appropriate task for them, I guess, to try to fill vacant properties?
I mean, that's one of the things we're talking about, I don't know that, that that committee can, can fill them. I think we're, we're talking more about how to educate the public, um, around availability of parcels, you know, so that potentially on our website, or flyers, or something, you know, that there should be something, whether we have to create it, or whether we get it from a local commercial realtor, or what, some information so that folks who are interested in parcels that are currently
Right.
underutilized through to vacant, um, you know, become part of the conversation. Um, certainly, we're talking about, you know, former Donalins and all those kinds of things, um, we don't necessarily have access to any cutting-edge information that everyone else doesn't, um, but it's definitely something that's on our radar, so we'll try and keep it going forward.
With regards to the Bank of America, though, there, there is a bid out on the, on that building right now. Hopefully, somebody will bid on it, buy it, and do something with it.
You mean it's been advertised?
Yes, it's been advertised, it's been advertised for sale.
Uh-huh, well-
Bids are due, and I, and I know somebody that's interested in it, so-
Good, are there restrictions on that?
That I don't know, Allison, that's a good question, I don't know.
Well, and, and just in a related piece of information, I, as far as I can tell, from the legal notices that I've seen, Sacred Heart did get sold and is going to be converted to a single-family house, which sounds awful.
That was our understanding as well.
Sounds awful.
Mark, if you can share the information you have about where those proposals, where that, I guess it was a, a request for bids or whatever?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get all the information, I'll get all the information from the board.
That'd be great.
Yeah, and, and in some places, in some areas, Becky, there is an official individual who's got budget and is authorized to advertise properties and go out and try to match buyers and sellers, and try to keep, continue with the idea of containing the character of the town, and sometimes you have developed lists of potential businesses and buyers around and market those stuff, and those are pretty savvy individuals, and despite my best efforts at, you know, we could really use one of those people, it's just not a mess. I haven't found that it's the expense that people wanna take on, and if you just saw, you know, based on this, there's not necessarily a lot of payback from an increased revenue point of view, it's just, especially if you're refilling old, existing lots, you know, there's not a huge two million, two billion dollar development waiting to be sold on here. So there's, the ROI and something like that is very difficult, and, and when we ask our, our volunteers, you know, it'd be great to have a bunch of people who are really well-connected in the commercial landscape and know Hollis County people, but the best we can do is probably, as you say, advertise and try to hope for the best, or let market forces take their, um, their will, and don't worry, they will have their will, I suspect, in the next three or four years.
And that's been part of our discussion, is, is to make sure that we're communicating effectively in advance what it's realistic for this community to accomplish, and also that we're, we're prioritizing, so that we're not doing, you know, touching so many things and getting nothing actually accomplished, that we're, we're doing what we can effectively, so.
Yeah, I look forward, we look forward to that, thank you very much, thanks, thank the members for me, uh, um, your name is John Geiger?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Great, 'cause I really don't know.
Hi, John, that's Chickaby Row, I was graph, grappling, grappling forty-four.
Right, there you go.
Um, I got this, uh, message from Allison this afternoon, um, around the community compact, and, um-
Let me just-
I'm not sure how to proceed, because I wanted to add a column that said, "I have no idea."
Right.
Go for it.
And, so, I don't know, should we all go, like, on age and dementia-friendly best practices and bother? Um, and I don't mean bother in a negative way, um, Kathy, for, have we ever done this? Um, would there be value in asking the various department heads to, um-
Perhaps.
You know, because it-
Yep.
Uh, first-
Right.
To give an assessment and come back to us with it?
So let me just back up for one second and say what I sent out to everyone, I basically-
You did a lot of work to put this together.
It, it may look like it. I cut and pasted from the website-
Well, you did well.
Into Excel, um, what all the best practices are that are available potentially for us to collaborate with the state government around the community compact. Um, and then I added four columns, um, at my first pass, and I can't even remember what I said. Um, the practice isn't relevant, we're already doing this, we should consider this, but it's not a priority, and then this is a practice we should review in the next twelve months. Trying to kind of weed out which best practices folks are interested in reviewing, um, you know, ideally, when we tally the results, we would find that the five select board members and the town manager all agree on these three as our priorities, the reality of that happening is, it's not going to, um-
Why do you always doubt?
No, so I, I wondered whether there, we could add some way to make a comment. For instance, th- this doesn't seem to be the select board's purview, let's, you know, this, this should be answered by a different board, um, is there, or, you know, some sort of, something to that effect? Is there any way for that?
So let's be careful, A, we can't collaborate on a document-
Right.
-and not be in public session, so let's be really careful about what we do.
No, but just to be, we are in public session, so could we add a place where we can put in comments that could be with the instructions where, and we would send them to be tallied by somebody, like Dawn?
I mean, I think, I, I think ultimately, the select board will wind up prioritizing.
Absolutely.
Because we can't do them all, it's just trying to understand, I think, from people with more knowledge than I have around age and dementia-
Yep.
-where we stand, and what they might suggest was, was the next thing we should try and do.
So, so I thought it was great, your four categories, but if there was another one that said, maybe goes, someone else should be making the decision about this?
Well, they should let us know we've done it or we haven't done it.
I think the first two columns are probably, I, I mean, first two sounded to me like, or, I don't know, maybe your intent, and perhaps I misinterpreted your intent, but I felt like the first two were, town, give us analysis of whether we should have done these or we haven't done, or this is useless or useful, and then, from then, it's, you know, and, and we can take then that, I would rather give town people first pass at this.
Who, wait, who's filling this out?
The town, I would rather give the town departments-
My interpretation was, I was supposed to-
I thought the five of us were filling this out, right.
Why, why, why fill this out when we have no input first from the town employees and the town manager on what's useful, what's not useful to town operations?
Oh, well, that does touch on my thought that, wait, this doesn't, this isn't something I think the select board should be looking at, this should be looked at by the Board of Health, for instance, or the Council on Aging. That was a comment that I felt I wanted to be able to make, but-
I apologize, I thought this was intended for, um-
Right.
Uh, dissemination to the, to the department heads to help mark out, so that we can get some feedback on what is relevant and what's not relevant from a town department point of view.
I mean, I guess we, we could do that, to me, that, that's creating a, a much bigger project out of this, um, you know, basically, the only column in terms of, so in terms of a community compact agreement, that's something that's with the select board, um, to go forward with. So it would, you know, we're the only ones who can kind of authorize that in conjunction with the town manager. So if something hasn't risen to a level where we are aware of it and are feeling like, oh, we really need to make this a priority, my guess is it's probably not, um, in all honesty, the only column that I'm, would anticipate doing anything with at this point would be the, the one that I happen to color green, which is, we should review this within the next twelve months. And that the rest of them really
Don't matter.
Don't matter.
And I guess that's-
So if we just check on the green?
I'm a little, yeah, I'm a little concerned about pushing something forward in the middle of budget season, all the other things going on, because no matter what we do, any of these contacts requires work on the, from our town employees, and doing so has a cost, and is that cost gonna be overcome by either the result or the, or the grant funds? And so, if we wanna prioritize first, then kick that back to say, out of these five, are any of these gonna cost more or we're gonna get out of them, or what's the, what's the employee impact of these?
It, that, I mean, to me, that's absolutely part of the consideration. This was an attempt to garner some sort of consensus from the select board members and the town managers to what our priorities are, if folks would prefer, I mean, we can go through all a hundred and fifty line items in a public meeting, you know, and all raise our hand if we feel like this is, you know, we can rank them, I mean, I don't know.
Is there a point I would be able to shoot myself during that?
We, we can shoot each other, Mark, if it comes to that.
So, so perhaps we could come about this way, we can develop a working session, because we can't debate these, we can't do anything with these and not be in session, we can develop a working session while people have reviewed it ahead of time, and they've, they've selected ones they care about, and we can throw those on a board, so we're not going through all a hundred and fifty.
But why can't we, why can't we respond?
What she suggested is we fill it out and send them to Dawn, and she can tally. Barry, what she suggested is, we fill it out and send them to Dawn, and she can tally. So, if we just, even the ones we check in green.
I'm a little concerned about that being OML violation, because it's technically an opinion being submitted from all five of us for an outcome, and it's not.
But then she brings that to a meeting, and we get to share that. Isn't that legal?
That's a, that's a
I think it's one of those gray areas. We just had this one with the town manager review, where we weren't allowed to send it to certain people and review it. I'm just, let's get it checked out by town council.
Okay. That's why we would send it to Dawn, and we would winnow down the 150 to, we can discuss these top 10 that we all.
It still smells like deliberation through a third party, to me. That's just my opinion. But, like I said, I would rather have a working session where we pull out.
Barry, I think if you, if the board, if I may, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just want to make sure we do this right.
I think if the board were to, Allison put a spreadsheet together. Nothing wrong with her sharing that spreadsheet.
Yeah, that's a great start.
Yep, nothing wrong with her sharing that spreadsheet. I think if the board were to go through it and send them all back to me, and I were to compile a final document and put that on the agenda, that's not a violation of the open meeting laws. I think we can do it that way.
As long as we never see the
As long as you don't see what Becky says, or Allison says, or John says.
And it's just a total tally.
Correct. I think we can do it that way. And I think that was your intent, Allison.
Yep.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, John?
Well, I would like to suggest that essentially, we go for the green.
Yes.
Go for the green.
Exactly.
And not try to address every one of these, but pick one or two, make an assumption that it isn't being done, and say, "That's something I'd like to see in the next 12 months," and not get, not go broader than that.
Is there a threshold at which these become viable? For example, we operate on a majority vote. And is there a threshold at which one just doesn't rise to the level of being considered, because it doesn't have three or more people that are interested in it? Or do you want to bring them all back, if even one or two people, to have a debate about it?
I would have thought that the process would be to pick the ones that, you know, if any of them had five people saying, "We should consider this," great. If it's four, if it's three, if it's two, but at some point that we say, we're only gonna review the top six. I mean, we're not gonna get down to the 48 of them that only have one vote.
That's the question I asked. Yeah, right.
We probably have 70 that have no votes.
Exactly.
Well, that's, you know, okay.
So, if we just focus on the next 12 months?
Yep, absolutely.
And assume that none of this is happening now.
Yeah.
Pick the one or two in each category that we think are most important.
Yeah, I think that helps us.
And they don't even need to be within each category. I mean, it may be that
Well, there may be some category we blank.
Right. You know, some of the education best practices, for example, are not within the purview of the Select Board.
Right.
That said, I wasn't gonna express my opinion by cutting them out.
Right.
So, they're all there.
Appreciate that. Okay.
So, that's the plan.
Yeah.
Do we have anything else before we do our minutes, and then let everybody who's antsy and wants to leave leave?
Let me have three hours left of my birthday.
Happy birthday, Mark.
Happy birthday.
That's on the agenda now. We get to sing happy birthday to Mark Adog?
Please don't.
Exactly.
Come on!
That's okay.
It's karaoke night.
Yeah.
All right. Any more, any more GOR liaisons? Mary Dunn, may I? Is there anybody who wishes to move forward that we approve the meeting minutes of October 16, 2018?
So moved.
They look good to me.
I have several comments.
Okay. Is there a move in second before there's a comment?
I moved it, so.
Yeah, I heard a move.
I'll second.
All right, so it's been seconded by John. Not under discussion. Becky?
I think the minutes are supposed to note when someone is participating remotely, and then when they arrive. And I believe, Barry, you were not here at the beginning. That's why Allison called the meeting to order, and we had roll call votes, and then you arrived at some point. So, I think it needs to say that.
Correct. Okay.
So, page three, Mr. Pease arrived at the meeting at 8:08 PM?
Page three says that I arrived, and therefore, it's no longer remote.
Okay, I was, it doesn't need to say at the beginning that he's remote?
No.
Okay. Sorry, I missed that.
Kind of insinuated that by the roll call vote. The first vote that was taken was done by roll call, so.
Right, that's what made it.
It's a little more confusing, putting him remote than having him arrive, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but if it's at the top, then they would think you're remote for the whole thing.
Okay.
It's a challenge, but it's a hybrid.
Arrive late at the time.
We can do that.
Okay, on the item number.
How about we, how about to that point, Dawn, do you mind amending them to note at the top that Mr. Pease was remoted until 8:08 PM? Just so we're totally above board.
That would be great.
And thank you.
Yeah, that would solve my confusion. On the first page, item number two, the last two lines there talk about something that I said. I didn't want to just call Dawn and have her change this without making sure that the rest of you were okay with this. I believe the sentence should say, Ms.
Where are you at, please?
Page one.
Paragraph number?
The bullet towards the end, there's a numeral two, okay? In that paragraph at the very end, the second to the last line starts, "Ms. Pine," I would think it should say, "Ms. Pine said she thought that a needs assessment was different than tracking programs, and found that confusing." Okay? "That didn't think" part is, I think, wrong.
So, what are you asking to change?
Instead of saying, "Ms. Pine said she didn't think," it should say, "Ms. Pine said she thought."
Okay.
Okay, all of you?
If that's what you intended, and that's what you thought, then
It's what I intended.
Then that's, that your intent is noted.
And then my, one other comment is page three, item number five, which is near the top of page three.
No, I'm good. I can.
Yep.
One, two, three, four, five, six lines down.
And the first paragraph under five.
Yes. It says, it ends with the word "thought," but the word is supposed to be "though."
So, a typo.
Yes, that's it.
Okay. I have a resolve.
Threw it instead of the slot. Okay.
Okay, so amended with the substantive change of noting my remote until 8:08, and the negative to a positive change, is there any further discussion on the minutes? And does, do people, can I get a motion to accept as amended, please?
I move that we accept the minutes of November?
October.
I'm sorry. October 16, 2018, as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Allison, do you mind withdrawing your original motion?
Absolutely. Consider it withdrawn.
Thank you. Just procedurally, make sure we're all up in the other right. All right, Dawn, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, we're adjourned. I will see everybody a week from Monday. We are not meeting next week.
Don't be anxious.
No meeting next week.